You ready?
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Dean Shatley. I'm the Board Attorney for the Buncombe County School Board, and I want to welcome all of you here tonight. As our first order of business, we are going to swear in one returning member and two new board members to the Board of Education. So I'd like to introduce Chief District Court Judge, Judge Calvin Hill, who will be doing the honors tonight. And members of the family, we're going to do these separately, and members of the board members' families are welcome to come down and be with them and/or hold the Bible.
I'll pronounce your name. Now tell me that again, so I'll be sure I get it right.
McMahon.
McMahon.
Just like it.
Okay, alright. Now, Ms. McMahon, we're going to go through this thing word by word. I'm going to break it down into small digestible pieces. You'll be able to follow me, and I'm going to make you say every word of this oath.
Okay.
So they know you mean it, okay?
Okay.
Place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right. Aye.
Aye.
Cynthia, say your name.
Cynthia McMahon.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Cynthia McMahon.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers.
And to the constitutional powers.
And authorities.
And authorities.
Which are.
Which are.
Or may be.
Or may be.
Established for the government thereof.
Established for the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor to support.
And that I will endeavor to support.
Maintain.
Maintain.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution of said state.
The Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Cynthia McMahon.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will well and truly execute.
That I will well and truly execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the Board of Education.
For Buncombe County.
For Buncombe County.
According to the best of my skill.
According to the best of my skill.
And ability.
And ability.
And according to law.
And according to law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Clinton Maxwell Queen.
Are you there?
I'm well, thank you. My wife's here.
Okay, we'll get that Bible. I want to thank your daughter for showing me the way in here. I was lost. She brought me in. Place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right. Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Clinton Maxwell Queen.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Clinton Maxwell Queen.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers.
And to the constitutional powers.
And authorities.
And authority.
Which are.
Which are.
Or may be.
Or may be.
Established for the government thereof.
Established for the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor to support.
And I will endeavor to support.
Maintain.
Maintain.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution of said state.
The Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent with.
Not inconsistent with.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Clinton Maxwell Queen.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will well and truly execute.
That I will well and truly execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the Board of Education.
For Buncombe County.
For Buncombe County.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
And according to the law.
And according to the law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, and I'll be sure that the clerk of court has one of these on file.
Thank you, sir.
Just sign it, then I'll sign it right here.
That's me.
Alright, I'll break this down into small parts. You'll be able to follow me all the way through.
I hope so.
Place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right. And who is this holding the Bible?
It's my wife Debbie.
Alright, aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Pat Bryant.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Pat Bryant.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers.
And to the constitutional powers.
And authorities.
And authorities.
Which are.
Which are.
Or may be.
Or may be.
Established for the government thereof.
Established for the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor to support.
And that I will endeavor to support.
Maintain.
Maintain.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution of said state.
The Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent.
Not inconsistent.
With the Constitution of the United States.
With the Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge.
To the best of my knowledge.
And ability.
And ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Pat Bryant.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will well and truly execute.
That I will well and truly execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the Board of Education.
For Buncombe County.
For Buncombe County.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
And according to law.
And according to law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
I want you to sign it, and then they send it to me, and I'll make sure you got one of these on file at the clerk of court.
Thank you.
Just a couple of weeks ago, of course, at this point it already feels like a year or so, we were invited to sing with the Asheville Symphony on their Young People's Concert Series. So, we're gonna sing a piece from that concert, the Mozart Ave Verum Corpus. It was an all Mozart concert, all performed by, aside from the symphony itself, all high school and younger students who performed the entire concert. So, it'll be slightly different without the orchestra, but just as beautiful.
For Mozart to Bach, can't go wrong with those two guys.
From Mozart to Bach, can't go wrong with those two guys. Up next, sort of leftover from our fall concert, but I still think appropriate for the season, especially when we have so much to be thankful for. I know I certainly do, because I get to stand up in front of these fantastic singers every single day. And Thanksgiving was great, and the break was nice, but I'm gonna tell ya, there's nothing like getting to stand in front of these guys and listen and make beautiful music. So this is a famous E. Cummings poem, "I Thank You, God."
I thank you, God.
For most this amazing day.
For the leaping greenly spirits of trees.
And the blue true dream of sky.
And for everything which is natural.
Which is infinite.
Which is earth.
I who have died am alive again today.
And this is the son's birthday. This is the birthday of life and of love and peace. And of the day great happening illimitably earth.
How should be tasting.
Tasting.
Touching.
Touching.
Hearing.
Hearing.
Seeing.
Seeing.
Breathing.
Breathing. And he lifted from the noob on nothing. Human merely being doubts unimaginable you. Now the ears of my eyes awake. And now the eyes of my eyes are open.
Now, since we are the Madrigal Singers, would, our performance would be incomplete without a couple famous holiday Madrigals. One from Italy, and one from actually the Ukraine, that we've adopted as a wintertime carol, but is actually intended to be a springtime carol, but we love it anyway.
On December 5th and 20, boom, boom, boom. On December 5th and 20, boom, boom, boom. A child was born this night so rosy white, so rosy white.
Son of a fairy virgin holy.
In a stable mean and lowly, boom, boom, boom. On December 5th and 20, boom, 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 boom. On December 5th and 20, boom, boom.
On December's most important day, let us be gay.
Let us be gay. We go first to church and then we have the sweetest ones in candy, boom, 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 boom. God will send us days of feasting, boom, 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 boom.
God will send us days of feasting, boom, boom, boom.
With hot months and in cold for young and old, for young and old.
We tell the morning story.
Never singing of his glory, boom, boom, boom.
Hoak how the bells, sweet silver bells, songs seem to say, broke cares away. Christmas is here, ringing a cheer, to young and old, link in the flock. Ding dong ding dong, that is the song, big trouble ring, dog heaven ring.
One seems to hear words of good cheer from everywhere filling the air. Oh, how they count, raising the sound, oh, how they get, a little tongue. Giddy, 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 while people sing songs of good cheer.
Christmas is here, ding, ding, merry, 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 this song. Ding, ding, merry, 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 this song. On, on they send, dong, without a, ding, ding, dong, ding, ding, dong. Hoak how the bells, sweet silver bells, songs seem to say, broke cares away. Christmas is here, ringing a cheer, to young and old, link in the flock. Ding dong ding dong, that is the song, big trouble ring, dog heaven ring.
One seems to hear words of good cheer from everywhere filling the air. Oh, how they count, raising the sound, oh, how they get, a little tongue.
Giddy, 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 while people sing songs of good cheer. Christmas is here, ding, ding, merry, 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 this song. Ding, ding, merry, 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 this song. On, on they send, dong, without a, ding, ding, dong, ding, ding, dong.
On, on they send, dong, without a, ding, ding, dong, ding, ding, dong.
We do have one more. This one's sort of just a thank you and a big ol' hug.
Have yourself a merry little Christmas. Let your heart be bright. From now on, our troubles will be out of sight. Have yourself a merry little Christmas. Make the yuletide gay. From now on, our troubles will be miles away. Here we are as in olden days. Happy golden days of yore. Faithful friends who are dear to us. Gather near to us once more. Through thy years, we all will be together. If the fates allow. Hang a shining star upon the highest bough. Have yourself a merry little Christmas now. Faithful friends who are dear to us. Gather near to us once more. Through thy years, we all will be together. If the fates allow. Hang a shining star upon the highest bough. Have yourself a merry little Christmas now. Merry Christmas now.
Merry Christmas now.
Merry Christmas now.
We'd like to thank the Reynolds High School Ensemble. Isn't it nice that the gifts that are given to us can be shared to those students, can be shared with us tonight? And not only shared, but the, the quality of, of that sharing is quite moving. Thank you. Dr. Baldwin, I believe it's time for your comments.
It's tough going after a incredible performance like that. I'll give it a try.
Everything's downhill, huh?
Well. I, I do wanna preface my comments with just recognizing, we, we've got a extremely large contingent of school-based staff here, and especially our school-based administrators. And I, I know the kinda tough days you, you put in on behalf of our school system, just wanna let you know, we appreciate you, and we appreciate your dedication, your leadership is invaluable. So, thank you for being here, that says a lot, after a long, tough day at, at work for you to be here. What about the North Buncombe High School Black Hawk, Black Hawk Marching Band? Mr. Evans is, is here, and I know Ms. Franklin's very proud of that group. We wanna wish them the best as they participate on December 7th in the 70th Annual Commemorative Parade at Pearl Harbor. And I was honored to, I was invited by Mr. Evans and that particular board to be a part of their commemoration commissioning program that took place last week, and that, that was just really, really what a heartwarming event that was. The band will symbolically represent the entire state of North Carolina, and more specifically the USS North Carolina Battleship. And just what an incredible effort for that entire North Buncombe community. In fact, Ms. Franklin, I think they've set the bar for us here in this county. They raised over $250,000 in about a year and a half, and in that period of time to allow, I, I think 118 Jack student performers are going to be headed to Pearl Harbor. Mr. Evans was, was pushed and pulled, and so he is gonna be in one of those suitcases of the student performers, he will be there, and we're just so excited for those kids. A once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, we're so proud of 'em. Thank you to the 2,752 stakeholders that took part in our recent district-wide survey as part of a work session in January for our school board. We will provide you the survey results, and we'll be having a lot of fun discussing those. These results represent some real excellent feedback to help us steer our district's course for the future. Speaking of the work session, we will renew our policy review and revision. I know Ms. Swanger and her staff are excited about that. We will begin that on January 15th, and that is also the date for our regular board session in January. We will begin that work session at 3:30. We'll also include a presentation from our curriculum department, and that will be focusing on testing and assessments. Mr. Bryan, I think you requested, from the standpoint of the board, that we put together that presentation. During that time, I'm going to take advantage of, of that particular topic and ask Mr. Gorsuch to give us a preview of the General Assembly's school grading process, and that will be activated across the entire state of North Carolina in mid-February. So, I think that will be a good opportunity for him to give you a preview of what the criteria is involved at the, at the three different levels, as well as possibly a preview of, of our performance. Congratulations to our Buncombe County Commissioners. They were awarded the Commissioners of the Year Award by the North Carolina School Boards Association. That is a very prestigious honor. Both the Buncombe County and Asheville City School Systems jointly nominated our commissioners. And from the standpoint of this superintendent, that is a well-deserved recognition for the support that they've provided both of our school systems. We have a number of holiday events. You had a wonderful example of what those events will look like across our school system. Number of band and choral concerts. I, I know that many of you in, in your districts, if you'll just simply check those individual school websites, you can identify the specific information on when and where those concerts will be held. And that concludes my comments. Madam Chairman? Madam Chair.
Thank you. Over to my right, your left, is a place to sign up for public comment if you haven't done so, and if you wish to do so, would you please do that at the yellow sign? Now, it's time for our employee recognition. Dr. Porter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Baldwin, board members, it is a special, I really enjoy this time of the board meeting because we get to recognize dedicated employees that have been giving many years of service. And this evening, we are gonna begin with a 20-year service member, a social studies teacher and school website director from North Buncombe Middle School, Ms. Christine Brown with 20 years. 20? She does not look old enough for 20 years. No, 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 you're not getting off that easy. All right, website designer, tell me about the secrets to a successful website.
You do whatever the principal says.
She has learned well.
That's what she did.
Thank you, Christine. Also with 20 years of service, we have, an instructional assistant from Weaverville Primary is Donna Smith here. Donna. Hey Donna, come on over here. This is, this is the hot seat. There you go, Donna, and your service pin? 20 years of service, what is your best memory? And 20 years in Buncombe County? You can be honest, it's okay, we're amongst friends.
I didn't have to, think I'd have to say anything, so I didn't think about it.
How about a favorite memory? 20 years, have they all been in Buncombe County schools?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And your favorite memory maybe?
Same school.
Is it the best school in Buncombe County?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
For sure.
And tell me your favorite story about dealing with a student, how about that?
When they come in in the morning and give you a hug, and they appreciate everything you do for 'em and how you teach 'em.
Absolutely. Great, thank you very much. Thank you. By the way, Dr. Baldwin likes when I come in and give him a hug in the morning as well. Okay, the Director of Transportation, Mr. Joseph Huff, he keeps the wheels going around on our buses. Joe, with 20 years of service, come on down. Tell you a little secret, he was supposed to be here last month, but he was on board business. Joe? 20 years, the most challenging part of your job is what?
Calling the weather in the wintertime.
And why is that challenging? I know the superintendent's with you, he probably has nothing to do with that, does he, Joe?
It's challenging, but if we just think warm thoughts, right, Dr. Baldwin? Think warm thoughts.
Warm thoughts, that's the secret, Joe. Thank you very much for your service. That concludes our service, that concludes the service recognitions. Chair Baldwin? Chairman?
Now, it's time for good news.
We have some of that as well, thank you very much.
Very good.
All right, first of all, I'm gonna go over a couple social media things. First of all, we have nearly 5,000 likes on Facebook. If you have not liked us on Facebook, we have exactly 4,998. We need two more likes for 5,000, so if you haven't done it, we'll take a minute now, go ahead. All right, I'm kidding, get around to it. But just to give you some idea of the reach, last week, we were on vacation, and we had 10,000 folks that we reached last week. Typically, we reach 13,000 to 15,000 folks. That's not people that just, you know, check in, but these are people that actually read the stories. So, as you guys have the stories out in the schools, of course, share them with us. On our Twitter account, we're right at 3,02924, so go ahead and sign up on Twitter. It's the best way folks find to get the weather reports. Mr. Huff, yes, so that's how we get it out there, of course, the local media, but sign up, we'll give it to you directly. One last bit of good news, if you were following the news the last couple of weeks, we had two schools recognized as two of the best 100 public schools in North Carolina. One of them was Early College, ranked number 61, and another school that's on fire, Robertson, ranked number 49. And literally on fire two weeks ago, did you all see it in the news? They literally were on fire. I'm going to take a little privilege, I've asked Amy Roney to come down and talk about what is going on so well at Robertson. Amy? Amy has the gift of gab, this is nothing to her. It is pretty deep, and I'm pretty tall.
We have a lot of, a lot of wonderful things going on at TC Robertson, but I will refer back to a saying I once heard, "If it goes great, they did it; if it goes good, we did it, and if it goes bad, I did it." So thankfully, this is one of those "they" moments, that I have to give credit to our wonderful counseling staff, our students, our supportive community. Our teachers are just so great at meeting our students right where they are every single day. But I would also be remiss to not mention all of our high schools. If we were being graded on our Madrigal Singers, we would recognize Reynolds, or our band, we might recognize North Buncombe, or Technology, we would recognize INCA for their leadership in technology. We all have things to be very proud of, and so many times when we are given these awards, we have no idea that we're being graded or how we're being graded, we just end up in the paper. So, this time, it just happens to be Robertson that's being recognized, but all of our schools are fantastic, and I'm very honored to work for Buncombe County.
Thank you, congratulations.
On fire?
On fire, yes. Madam Chair, that will conclude the good news section, but I would be remiss if I didn't happen to mention that we have a very famous alumni, our very own superintendent from Robertson High School, Dr. Baldwin. Thank you very much.
People signed up. Would you come down, please?
Hi, my name is Garrett Arts, and I'm a father of three in the INCA District. I have one at INCA Middle and two at Hominy Valley Elementary. Hominy Valley Elementary is where I'm the parent champion of a Safe House of School program. Superintendent Baldwin walked along with 80 of our kids back in October, and I'd invite all of you on the school board to consider Safe House of School and ways to encourage walking and biking to school as part of what we do when we build schools and as we improve our schools and our students. I can tell you that they love it, and that's probably one of the best parts. parts about it, is the kids love it. And as parents behind all that, we know their focus in school is improved by walking and biking to school. We know that their test scores are better when they walk and bike to school. We know that we reduce pollution and congestion around our schools, make them safer because of that. And I probably don't have to lecture anyone on, uh, the obesity issue i- in our schools, and this also helps with that issue. And so, as we're building near and dear to my heart, INCA Intermediate, I would encourage you also to look at ways to get a crosswalk funded and built at the intersection of Jacob Home Way and Sand Hill Road. There's about 750 homes that are connected to that spot with sidewalks. And I'm asking you to do that because we're raising $8,500, I'm $1,000 to go, I'm raising $8,500. Uh, we've raised $7,500 to match about $2,500, that, I mean, $25,000 from Department of Transportation. These funds that ever, that we've raised will leverage those funds to build a crosswalk and a pedestrian-activated, uh, traffic light at the intersection of ANCA Lake Road and the entrance to the school. And so, I encourage you to consider all of these things and as we build schools and to make our kids stronger and do better in school. Most of us, looking at the table, I can guarantee at least half of you walked or biked to school when you were, when you were growing up, and I was one of those people. I hope you'll join us, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have it, okay, that's the end of our public comment. We will now move to the action agenda. Uh, the first item is the 2015-16 School Calendar, and I believe the board has had a copy of that. Do we have someone to speak to us in that regard? I believe that's going to be Suzanne Swanger. And her co-chair.
My co-chair, and I will share with you the committee process for this year's calendar. Ms. Lopez will begin.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Baldwin, and board members. Uh, as Ms. Swanger said, we have co-chaired for several years now, the Calendar Committee, and, um, we're just going to tell you a few of the highlights, and especially for the new board members, a little bit about the process that we go through. We have 37 members, or we had this past year, 37 members on our Calendar Committee, and they represent a cross-section of our school system. It is, we have principals, I'm sure there are some here in the audience, we have teachers. Uh, Ms. Smith, who was recognized, a teacher assistant was on our committee this year. Uh, we also have parents and students. We had, this year, we had eight parents and two students, and we try to rotate so that we get every district represented. Uh, our committee this year met twice, uh, in September and in October. And, um, basically, we lay out the parameters. There are many limitations on what we are able to do with the calendar, um, and we lay out those limitations for the committee. And then, there are several things that we, the committee does have to, to decide, however, and some of these are very important. But our main guiding principle is that we have to have either 185 days or 1,025 hours of school. And for this calendar that we are presenting to you, asking for your approval, we have 180 school days. And so, we are going to rely upon or meet the minimum of 1,025 hours, and, uh, we feel that we can easily do that. Um, but with our, um, committee, we, uh, once, we looked at and we considered the possibility of the number of days, we decided on 180 days. In the last couple of years, we've had 182 days. For example, this school year, we have 182 days. But, in their budget this past summer, the legislature decided to defund any days over 180. So, they kind of helped us decide that issue, and our committee was in agreement that we should just have 180 days. So, if you're looking at the calendar, the first day for students is, uh, August the 19th. For those of you who don't know, the law says that you can not start school any earlier than the first Monday, or the Monday closes to August 26th, unless you have a weather waiver. And we did qualify for a weather waiver, our committee chose to exercise that option, and we requested, and we have been granted a waiver. So, we are recommending schools to begin on August 19th. The last day for students would be June the 2nd. And, uh, other than that, the calendar must consist of 215 days. So, to reach our 215 days, we will have 12 workdays, 11 holidays, 10 annual leave days, and two days when the teachers may take annual leave, or otherwise known as vacation leave. Uh, one highlight to the calendar this year is that we have always been guided by the number of holidays that the state has. We must have an equivalent number, even though they don't have to be on the same day, we have to have the same number. Well, the state last summer passed a law that state employees got an extra holiday. Therefore, school employees get an extra holiday. We have 11 holidays this year. And I'm going to let Ms. Swanger, uh, tell you about the rest of the calendar.
It's important to know what those days look like, and if you've looked at your calendar, you will notice that we have early release days, and for the new board members, those are days that teachers may work together in the professional learning communities in their, in their school buildings. They might work together in their content groups or their grade levels. And we have had training for this, and it gives teachers time to plan what they're going to teach, plan the assessments to check for the results of their teaching, and then to decide, did the students get the information? If so, now what? If they didn't, what kind of interventions can I plan? So, those early release days that you have provided us the past two years have been very beneficial to our staff and our students. So, you will see six early release days, and then we have four early release days for teachers to do paperwork, parent conferencing, and my staff leaves them alone. We do not plan for trainings on those days, and we ask principals to not plan trainings so that they can actually do those important paperwork duties. Uh, many of the teacher workdays are on Mondays or Fridays. Uh, committees over the last two years have asked for childcare and family outings, to please schedule those as such, so we've continued that. And we also paid close attention to religious holidays and tried to schedule appropriately there. The biggest task of this group, when will spring break be? And everyone has their own ideas on when they would like to have spring break, but we have traditionally had spring break the last week of March, first week of April. So, uh, by majority vote of this committee, March 28th through April 1st will be spring break. And I know families have counted on that week as a traditional vacation time. It falls adjacent to Easter, it is also the same week of Asheville City Schools' spring break. It is not the same week as AB Tech. So, we're working with our Early College, Middle College staff to plan their calendar, and we will bring that to you in January. Do you have any questions?
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I guess that was a second as well. Thank you, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Um, any opposed? Good, I think we'll have school next year. Um, so we have a budget amendment, amendment number one. Do I have someone to speak to that? Ms. Deborah Frisbee. Come on down.
Madam Chair, Superintendent Baldwin, and members of the board, uh, you have before you budget amendment number one. This represents activity that has occurred since you adopted the budget at the November board meeting. Um, you, I hope you've had a chance to review it and, um, ask if there's any questions.
Any board member have a question on this?
I just have one. It, and I'm asking this, I've asked this before, mostly for the two new board members. When we're looking at these budget amendments, it's a reflection of things that have already occurred. Is that accurate, for the most part?
Absolutely. And it's things that come in after we adopted the original budget.
But when we're looking at, at, at change in student counts and those types of things, those adjustments have occurred, but we, by law, have to make this adjustment
That is correct.
To the adopted budget.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And just a quick question on the 9.5 million for the, um, capital outlay. Obviously, that won't be spent this year, but just for budget reasons, we have to fund it this year, and some of that will be carried over to next year?
Absolutely.
And can you explain why that was not included in the original budget, given that it was part of the spring planning process? I, I'm still learning about the timing.
We didn't budget until we actually received the funding.
I see. So, we had not received the funding yet?
That's correct.
Okay.
Anyone else?
I have a couple of other questions, again, just educating myself as a new board member. I noticed that under the local current expenses category, state revenues are included there. And I know that that's not part of this amendment, we're not making any changes, changes in that category of, uh, local current expenses, or, yes, there, local current expenses, Section 4. Can you just explain to me why state revenue appears there? Sorry to catch you off guard.
Oh, that's okay, I was trying to find it. Um...
Can you give her a page number?
Uh, it's Section 4, line 3200. The pages aren't numbered. Um, it's...
Funding source 3200.
Right.
Thirty thousand dollar number.
And again, this is just for my education, so if you don't have that in front of you, that's fine.
I don't have that in front of me, but I will absolutely
Follow up about it later.
Find the answer and get back to you.
That's perfectly fine.
There are some revenues that we receive from the state that we have to record in the local current expense budget.
The state doesn't always give us money in a timely fashion.
Right. Funny how that works. And then the other question that I had, is a similar question, and again, it's fine if, if you want to answer it later, or whatever way is most convenient, but also in that Section 4, under local current expense, local, it, it's line 4120 through 4800, local other than county appropriation, can you?
That's fines and forfeitures.
Okay. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Looking for a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, yes, thank you, Ms. Frisbee. The, uh, next item on the action agenda is deed restriction amendment for the Miller property, and... Okay?
Board members, at the last meeting, this was presented to you for your discussion, and based on the consensus of the board, there has been drafted a amendment to the restriction. Um, just to give you a little bit of background information, the audience a little bit of background information, the board deeded in 1991, a piece of property, um, next to one of the schools in Swananoa. So, just roughly a little bit over an acre, almost 1.1 acres, and there were some restrictions placed on that property, including that could only be used for a single-family residence. The owner, who is still the owner in which you sold it to, would like to be able to place a secondary residence on there for a family member, um, and has requested this from the board. Um, and that, that second home would be a modular home. So, you would be amending the restrictions that the board put on the property back in 1991 to allow two homes to be on the, the parcel, as well as, um, the construction type to be a modular home. However, as you can see in the amendment, mobile homes or trailers are still restricted as previously restricted, and any commercial, business, or industrial use is also restricted as well. I don't know if there are any other questions, but I think you guys discussed this
We did.
Well, last month as well, but especially for the new board members.
Any board member have questions?
Is this land contiguous with property owned by the Millers?
Yes.
It, it, so in other words, they have a piece of property and this adjoins their current property?
Well, this is their property.
Understood.
Yeah. I don't know if they have another, do you know, Tim, if they have another piece of parcel?
It's a, I mean, it's a triangle next to the WD Williams with a creek between the property and the school, and a line of trees. And it's all, I mean, what we're talking about is one contiguous shape, and then there's a, it's surrounded on the other side by two roads. Does that answer your question?
I was just, uh, curious as to placing two homes there, if that will meet the requirements by code for, uh, repair, uh, for septic systems and that kind of thing, additional property. Will there be space to do that, or will that then become an issue as well?
Uh, it's a, the, was, public sewer and water run on that road?
Oh, okay.
But it also is going to be, just from eyeballing it, driving by, it looks like it's going to be really, really tight, but that's not really our problem.
But they have access to public, that's great.
And they still have to follow all other restrictions, as well as zoning ordinances on the property.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Uh, could I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Items on the consent agenda, the board has had, uh, before them for review. Do I hear a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? In the information agenda, you have three policy codes that, um, are here for your review, and, um, should you have any questions or, um, comments about that, you can get in touch with Dr. Baldwin, and he will explain those to you. Uh, upcoming events, we have a board meeting on Thursday, January 15th. It's a little different from the past because of Christmas Vacation. And then on Thursday, February 5th, at 6:30. Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Let's go home.